The meeting with the Board of Adjustments in the City of Elizabeth will now be adjourned. This meeting with the Board of Adjustments in the City of Elizabeth will begin this Thursday, 23rd day of August 2012, as been duly advertised and accorded to its provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act as a special meeting. Notices said meeting was published in the Star Ledger on January 27, 2012. The notices of vacation speed heard were also published in the Star Ledger at least ten days before this. Madam Secretary, can you hold your roles?
Commissioner Brandon, Commissioner Patrick, Commissioner Gonzalez, Commissioner Silva, Commissioner E, Barbara Dixon, Commissioner Connell, Commissioner Gomez, Commissioner Vettelis, Vice Chairman Papa, Chairman Niz.
Air. Will everyone please rise for the legislative meeting? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is there a motion for approval denied in this as a regular meeting? Most of the improvements to the chairman, voted by Vice Chairman Papa, who has seconded. Seconded. Seconded by Commissioner Gonzalez. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? It's going on. First matter for the Board of Adjustments tonight will be application number Z-19-12. The Patrick School Incorporated 545-557 Morris Avenue.
Good evening, Joseph Pater from the Law Firm of Galveston. On behalf of the Advocate, Patrick School here. The application before you concerns property located at 545-557 Morris Avenue. Many of you will know this or refer to this as the Social Security Administration Building, the former Social Security Administration Building. We are here to looking for use variants to allow the use of that existing structure for a private school known as the Patrick School. I have represented the Patrick School here this evening to explain a little bit about the Patrick School and what is intended for the use of the building are, curriculum and various stated activities that anticipates for any improvement. The property is actually located split zone with part of the property in the building are located near C1 commercial zone. However, the rear portion of the property and parking lot is being an R1 residence. The proposed school use is not permitted in this building. Therefore, we're here for the use variants, the D1 use variants. There are no new old parents is required and there's very little site improvements approved. Essentially, the school is going to be moving into that existing building, performing interior renovations to make it appropriate for the use. And the site as it exists is appropriate for the school. There is ample parking that is demonstrated in the plan. And there are some, there are two existing done in corner conditions. Mr. Galar, the article addressed in this testimony. And at the side of the corner, new old parents. We are here solely for the use variants for this school. My first witness, Mr. Gonzalez from the Patrick School, give the Board an overview of the school and the faculty enrollment and stated acknowledgements in this location.
Good evening, my name is Mr. Gonzalez.
Please spell your name, address, and your license.
My name is Mr. Gonzalez. First, Mr. Gonzalez, C-H-A, B-A, N-E-S, from the Department of Education. I am advised that the Patrick School will be seconded.
The last two is for you.
Seconded.
Mr. Gonzalez, please clarify.
The question.
Sir, you have the question right now. Mr. Gonzalez, would you provide your experience and your position at the Patrick School place?
I'm advised that the Patrick School would be working school for extra classes for the past 24 years.
And your experience in the educational field is for 24 years in that test?
That's right.
Can you give the Board, I mentioned in my overview that the existing building, the existing office building is appropriate for the school needs, but can you just explain what attracted you to this location? And the fact that you in your field of building is adequately suited for your specific school use?
The location is vastly comparable with the previously located, which is important Elizabeth. And that immediately drew our attention. Also, proximity to Canadian diversity that follows the surrounding areas. Added a lot of buses to our faculty administration, students, and parents further as well as students.
And the gray lines are H8312 as I cited?
That's right.
And the school offered the corporate director mandated by the State of New Jersey, correct?
That's right.
Could you advise the Board as to your anticipated faculty and student enrollment at this point in time?
Our faculty set up in 2015 and our enrollment in 2100 voices.
My understanding from speaking to your architect that the building itself has the ability to after renovations, all components come up to 190 students, is that your understanding?
That's right.
So for the right of your anticipation to accommodate the varying future of 190?
That's right.
Will the school be operating on the usual, I should say, the public school calendar?
For what part of the school?
Will you have summer session or anything outside of the September to June calendar?
We do, the hours are the same as the regular school year.
Will any of the students be bused to this location on a daily basis?
Ninety-eight percent of our students will arrive and leave our premises by college transportation.
But that would mean active school buses coming to this location?
No.
Your school on occasion has class trips or maybe after school activities such as parent teacher conferences? Is that correct?
That's right.
You're obviously very familiar with the property and the existing building. In your opinion, with your vast experience in the educational field, do you feel the building can be adequately renovated to accommodate the school use?
Absolutely.
Are any site improvements or changes to the parking or the outside of the property and the fire areas?
It is not being required, however, it is being implemented. Parking was needed, but the order is standing. And fencing area will be responded again, not required.
Do you want to make some minor cosmetic improvements to the parking lot and the fencing? Some landscape, is that correct?
That's right.
Will the school have any community components or means to be part of the curriculum of this pitch required to offer their time to many community required services or programs?
All students are required of part of the graduation requirements to complete several hours, freshman 20 hours, sophomore 40 hours, junior 60 hours, and senior 20 hours. And it will all be pre-approved and are generally known as a.
What types of programs, community-based programs, would those be?
As a school, we have done things such as feed homes in St. Elizabeth. We have engaged in re-appalling in St. Elizabeth. We have worked with various committee and other organizations within the city. But none of our students go in the city now. Do provide healthcare service, not in the city. At homes, shelters, the city.
And these students will be in uniform as I cited?
That's right.
I have no further direct questions for Mr. Gonzalez.
Mr. Chairman, one of the concerns I have with the applicant addressed already is the landscape. I drove past the property this afternoon. I noticed shrubbery is missing, some is dead, some is just... So you'll work with the architect and the Florida City Planner and spruce me a little bit?
Absolutely.
That was the only question.
I have a question. Mr. Chairman. Are you having cafeteria or kitchen?
There will be no, there will be any area, but there will be no cafeteria since it prepared from on premises. We will have social bag lounges or they'll be able to pour in and out into the school, not for individualists.
No kitchen at all?
No.
Mr. Chairman, you can have some any kind of athletic program?
We do have in place early season, it's valuable. We have basketball court, which is well-known, and we have baseball. And we have those of the, those sports, all these sports will be more introduced for normalists.
Okay, but that'll be all premises on the street because?
That is correct. We have use of, as well as the little school system, also came in person.
My last question is, what your intent with the existing, you say, Patrick School?
Our intent?
Yeah.
That's what I was trying to say.
Would you like to recognize Commissioner Patrick?
Mr. President. Have you thought about wearing one of your fire treads? Where would this move though?
As a matter of fact, I'm on the deal of us being in the first school today and we're used to it. And that goes as, as you can imagine, it opened a new school. You know, so many things that we generate to tackle. That question did come in, but our, we are, we're working on this building. It's completed as well as being with these schools that's a couple of times greater than we said as a emergency evacuation virus. We do kind of plan in very future.
You have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you.
Our next witness is the project architect, James Gohera.
Would I also like to acknowledge Commissioner Dixon?
James Gohera, five fire charred city of Elizabeth, project architect.
Mr. Gohera, obviously been accepted by this school on numerous occasions. He's an expert planner and an expert architect. Are your licenses still in good shape?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gohera, you've been preparing a plan in this application. I don't mind opening that as a critical being under the site, having some improvements on landscaping, fencing. Can you just take the board down through most of the general orientation of the site and anticipation to use to the existing 11,999 square foot building for a school?
Okay, the first page of your answer is G-000. And the middle third part of that drawing is the existing site plan. The building is on Morris Avenue, it's so close to Morris Avenue. There's parking on the left side and to the rear of the building. The building enters from the left side, we'll go through the floor plan later. So essentially, there's parking against the left side to the rear. As been stated earlier, on the left side of the property, dividing this property from the neighbor to the left, the fencing, there will be new roofs. There will be a continuous fence on the left side of the property separating those two. Any gaps in landscaping will be filled in and any landscaping that's at least replaced will be. Site lining that's existed there will be checked so that it's all affordable to the rear of the parking, it's an existing records area which will continue to use. Going along the first page, we'll go through the variances. On the first page of the left corner, is all zoning information. The first, I'm reminded, this is a C1 zone for offices. This is an educational facility that we're here for a use variance. As far as the lot variances, the prevailing lot depth on Morris Avenue, this area is 240 feet. This lot is 225 feet, it's in distant condition. The lot front edge, the front yard, prevailing is 15 feet, we have 14 feet. And the other one is the lot left. Now, we're, so it's the use, it's the depth, and the front yard. Those are existing conditions, those are all the same conditions, all of the use. We can go to the page that has the floor plan. The third page of the standard is G-100. It's a floor plan facility. On the lower right is the entry. Floor plan essentially consists of both rooms, a computer lab, a multi-purpose room on the upper left corner. So there's 10 typical classrooms, a science lab, and there's blocks of toy facilities on the left side and down on the front area where the office and entry areas. That's pretty much the interior of the building, the useful square footage is 11,999 square feet. Capacity to begin with will be 140. After we do some modifications to the front areas, capacity, maximum capacity of the building is 190. 190 maximum capacity, correct? Essentially, the outside of the building will remain the same. This existing sign on the front of the building where Social Security seal was, that will be replaced by a sign for the name of the school. And on the front of the building, basically Morris Avenue, there'll be a sign again identified by our school name.
Right, those signs, I'm sorry, those signs will be fully compliant with the city ordinance?
Correct, those signs will be the maximum size, height, dimensions of the sign on the desk.
Now, Mr. Gohera, this building will be all inable building codes and appropriate codes for its school use?
That's correct, this is compliant with the construction code requirements, which also see program education requires.
I guess we can move to the hardware as we finish one. You've already addressed items two and three, Mr. Gohera, and four. The parking, you've demonstrated on your plan that the school compliance actually exceeds the parking requirements of the city ordinance, is that correct?
That's correct.
You've addressed lighting and landscaping, the lighting will remain the same. The applicant has agreed to supplement the weather or deficient landscaping.
Correct, yeah, absolutely.
The escape in, the trailer escape in will be replaced. I believe that's the only items in Mr. Gohera's set. I have no further questions for Mr. Gohera.
Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman. This is our, you're excited about the landscape, but just need to something?
Yes.
Bold work with our state planner?
Yes, we will.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gohera, one item, I'm sorry, another one, another. The existing traction was confirmed with the applicant that is appropriate in size for the existing school. Location size will continue to use, nothing will change, correct?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, do you see any meaning for a roll-off area? Or maybe put a drop-off, a D and O for people?
Well, the way this site was set up, actually, if you, as soon as you come into the site, the entry is immediately to the right. As soon as you come into the driveway, the building entrance is on the left side of the building. So being right on the side of the car. So vehicle could either temporarily drop off, sit and go there. If they didn't do that to curb, or they could, that's pretty much really the drop off I think below that, right front of the building.
There's only one way to leave the driveway.
Right, there's only one avenue, and exit to the property.
So is there, do you see a need for a roll-off mark, the parking for a roll-off area?
Well, well, right front of the building.
You mean on the street?
Well, no, no, when you're in the driveway, as soon as you come in the driveway, there's a cutout on the inside. Right by the front door of the building. As driveway comes in on the left side, there's parking stalls. But on the right side, the curtains just stir in which the building.
There's something there, maybe?
Basically, it's a car park.
This, this is a?
Yeah, a vehicle could pull, could pull over there, it had a way, it had a traffic.
Although the bad end mark, I go all there.
We could do that, they had it in mind, it's a roll-off. We could do that. And there was no parking, drop off lane. Sorry, park, no parking, drop off lane. So one of the parking spaces could be? Wait, 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 that's a, that's a, that's a, that's a, that area.
That's a roll-off, I think.
Since we have the fundamentals of parking, according to your notice, I'm going to think the applicant had an issue with that.
And the driveway, that driveway would run enough for in and out?
Yes, yes, yeah. That's somewhat of a soul issue in Social Security, basically has an in and out area.
Would the vehicle right now, maybe no left, or a right side?
I don't believe there was any distractions on that driveway.
There was no distractions before?
I don't believe so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner, any questions? Thank you, Mr. President. Just to confirm, this school will be taken up the entire available square footage of the building?
Absolutely, the entire material.
And this is a one-story building?
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Our final witness is our professional planner, Kevin McCorrigan.
Thank you. Kevin McCorrigan, Kevin McCorrigan, OBR, IDN. My address is in Magic House, in San Antonio, Roll.
Mr. McCorrigan, can you pass the board with your education, area expertise, license, mission pool, and any planning exempted words?
Would like to thank you.
Thank you.
I would be very, very happy to thank you.
Mr. McCorrigan, as a professional player, you had an opportunity to evaluate the site of the city ordinance in the management line for this application?
Yes, I have.
Could you provide the results of your planning analysis for the role of the school?
Yes. The reason that we are here this evening is because the advocate conceives approval for a use variance and preliminary and final site plan approval for private schools serving grades 8 through 12. Two pre-existing bulk variances are not depth and front yard remain unchanged. There are a number of unique aspects to this application, I think, that the board will be interested in. And that is first, the Patrick School wishes to adaptively reuse the current vacant former Social Security Administration Building on Morris Avenue, your partner for private secondary school. That building has been empty for a number of years. Property is split zone with commercial use along Morris Avenue and residential use to the rear. No physical changes will occur to the building in current previous testimony. Two pre-existing bulk variances are continuing to have change and then the new bulk variances are requested. The proposed use is less intensive than prior use. If you know, Social Security had large numbers of people coming home throughout the day. The day was rather extended. This school anticipates no more than 190 students. Fifteen staff arriving at set time in the morning, leaving at a set time in the afternoon. With summers always at the fore, the summer school segments which would be less intense than a normal school year. Schools in the city of Elizabeth are only allowed as a new PTO of professional office zone. They are not allowed in any other zone in the city. So this location requires a deep one use variance. Students, staff, and faculty will add economic activity to this area. This area is your notice of commercial area with a number of retail stores, commercial exits, as well as commercial residential, large apartment blocks. The educational use is being proposed here in an imperative and beneficial way. The City of Elizabeth Master Plan, which was reviewed in October 2005, lists several goals that apply to this application. Number four, continue efforts to redevelop designated redevelopment areas. Number five, concentrate new commercial activities in areas where they provide a support function for neighboring land uses and are well-served by transportation facilities. Number seven, encourage property improvements and enforce building zoning ordinances. And number eight, continue commercial activities in the high. This application supports those goals by adaptively reusing the existing and existing vacant building in an existing commercial zone along the state highway. This application also supports the purpose of the municipal land use law, where you know the purposes of zoning are listed in New Jersey statute 40555D-2. Goal A, to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in the state in a manner which will promote the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. Item F, foxtrot, to encourage the appropriate and efficient expenditure of public funds by the coordination of public development with land use policies. Finally, item E, golf, to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses of public and private according to their respective environmental requirements in order to meet the needs of all New Jersey citizens. Finally, item E, for golf, to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses, both public and private, according to their respective environmental requirements, in order to be convenient to all New Jersey citizens. This application is consistent with those passages from the municipal land use law by providing inherently beneficial to school. Inherently beneficial is a term that occurred before, it's one that is applied to uses that benefit all the citizens of the state of New Jersey, and it benefits so by both municipal land use law and by various courts. Among various inherently beneficial uses, hospitals, childcare centers, solar or nuclear facilities, that's all this school, state, which brings the benefit towards. Any use that satisfies the inherently beneficial use criteria also satisfies the positive criteria for the brand of the use variance. And the negative criteria are judged by a separate and different standard, which is called the SECA balancing test. The SECA balancing test goes through a series of four questions, which are asked to determine whether or not there are any detrimental effects of this application. The first question of the SECA balancing test is to identify the public interest of the state, and that interest is to supply a public, a school that is inherently beneficial use. The second item is to identify the detrimental effects that would ensue to the brand of the variance. This building is currently existing, is going to be adaptively reused. The outside of the building is not going to be changed in any way, the site will not be changed in any way. The landscaping is supposed to be deep up, thereby providing more of a buffer to the residents to the rear. Therefore, I see no detrimental effects that would ensue to the brand of the variance. Question number three is whether the board can determine whether to reduce any detrimental effects by imposing reasonable conditions. Since we can't identify any detrimental effects, there are no conditions to impose, other than by chair's schedule or about the opinion of the board on adding to the landscape. Number four is finally, the board should weigh the positive and negative criteria by balancing the public interest against the public detriment. In this case, the public interest, combining with school not creating any detriment. I believe that by weighing the detrimental effects against the public benefits, we see that there are detrimental effects, because the facility is suited for the proposed educational use of the new detrimental effects of public, or the area for the city. Public benefits include providing a location for inherently beneficial educational facility. And I would conclude that, and I believe that this inherently beneficial application can be granted without substantial pressure to the public good, and without substantial impairment of his own plan and his own ordinance. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien.
Commissioner?
I have a couple of questions, but I'm not sure if I should ask them.
I can help, Commissioner?
Sure, as you, actually, if you were stating, the use will probably be less effective. And the first of all, in this plan, that I think everybody gives the favor of this application, and you want to make sure, if you like. As you're explaining the use, it'll probably be less. The only difference is that everybody's going to show up on this campus. As far as transportation for the students, are you going to be using large buses, small buses? If a large bus goes into the property, you will not be able to turn around?
Fire tests have shown that ninety-eight percent of the students will be coming by public transportation, not by school buses. Therefore, they'll be taking New Jersey Transit out of Morris Avenue. And they'll be walking to the school.
They'll be taking one.
New Jersey Transit from Morris Avenue. They'll be walking to the school from Morris Avenue.
New Jersey Transportation meaning the buses?
New Jersey Transit, public buses.
Public buses, yes.
And so those buses will share students, elaborate. The fire test表明is that they'll be taking public transportation.
Okay?
Mr. Chabanas, you had, while you answered, can you answer the question regarding the transportation, I think there's some confusion about the majority of students will arrive and leave this building?
As a private school, which still can be brought across the state, in some cases, a few others, from New York, they do take trains and public buses in. There are no regular school buses provided, not by?
So, you really don't have the large buses, bringing all kids over time? No. Small school buses, private vehicles?
No.
There's no need to have a turnaround area?
No, there isn't.
Thank you, Mr. Chabanas.
Thank you, Mr. Chabanas.
Probably someone has this question before I can. What is the age group of the students that would be attending this school?
Three to eight to twelve.
Eight to twelve?
Yes.
I just have a question, as the gentleman before indicated that they would be taking public transportation. I don't see how a child between eight to twelve would be taking public transportation.
In grade three.
Of grade six to twelve, I got it, thank you. That's it. Thank you.
Commissioner, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien, I have no further questions.
Are there any members of the audience who wish to testify regarding the application? If so, please step forward, want to comment, and state your name and address to the record. Seeing none. Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman? The proposed site is the old Social Security building, it's been abandoned for years. The applicant is losing work to the city planner and enhancing the landscape. Parking and drop-off does not seem to be a problem. Given that, plus the fact that we were all saddened to hear about the closing of St. Patrick's High School just a couple of months ago, this application is putting a new life into this educational facility that's a tradition here in the city of Elizabeth. For those reasons, I men more are lying in favor of this application.
Anyone else? Commissioner?
No, I'm also in favor.
Welcome to the virtual closed session, Commissioners. How do you wish?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve this application.
Motion by Vice Chairman Al.
Al.
And a second by Commissioner Hernandez. Madam Secretary?
Commissioner Fernandez.
Aye.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Zilbo. Aye. Commissioner McConnell. Aye. Commissioner Butler. Vice Chairman Powell.
Aye.
Attorney General.
Aye.
Thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it.